All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission Meeting, Monday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. Article two, if you'd stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States Capitol and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Article three, approve the current agenda. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article four, disclose any conflict of interest.
None, none, none.
None. Okay, Article five, approve the minutes, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll support it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article six, acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. If you're here to speak on the first hearing that we have, Speed Collection, that is a public hearing, so you'll have an opportunity to speak then. If you're here to speak on the other two or anything else, now would be the time, although we do have another, Article ten, we give you that opportunity as well, so. Anybody wants to get up? Somebody online?
I'm pertaining to Article seven, but I'm concerned.
There'll be a public.
Yep, and there'll be a public hearing, then when you can come up and talk then.
Thank you.
You want? Lose some chairs? Um, okay. Uh, all right, Article seven, case number twenty-five dash three-eight-nine-seven, Speed Collection, Allison.
Hey, Article seven. Sixty-two fifty, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
The case in front of you, the address is sixty-two fifty, um, twenty-eighth Street, it's on the south side of twenty-eighth Street, um, north of the, or, um, east of the Culvers, just west of Lucerne, I believe is how you pronounce it. This is actually considered in our zoning maps as part of PUD thirty-nine, which is Centennial Park. However, I think at some point in the nineteen nineties, it just got lumped in with PUD thirty-nine. Regardless, um, it is zoned, planned unit development. There's one additional document in your packet that really has nothing to do with this PUD that was included, just for reference, to explain how planned unit developments were, um, approved. You know, it from pretty much the seventies to the nineties. If you've noticed, we don't usually have, uh, the ordinances like we have with other PUDs, for PUDs from the seventies to the nineties, and that's because if someone wanted dimensional variances, instead of going, you know, in this case, they wanted two buildings on one lot. And instead of, you know, making them split the lot, or asking them to go to the ZBA for a dimensional variance, they said, we'll just do it as a PUD, approve the site with the two buildings, but then didn't write any other rules. So when we look at this site, when the applicant came to us to ask if this was an allowed use, we used the underlying zone district, which was general business B two. So in the general business B two, um, there is a sales and services of vehicles or cars allowed by special use. The applicant is not asking for extensive sales of vehicles, so I do want to clarify right off about the applicant is not asking for a traditional car lot. They're more so asking for services of vehicles that will be stored within the bounds of the existing building at sixty, at the, the eastern building at sixty-two fifty. So if you can see my cursor, if you flip over, or for anybody in the audience, the, the proposed site is actually in the southernmost portion of the east building, which used to be storage for AK Rick's. AK Rick's moved out of there, Sappanet came in asking for, um, it is service, but when we were kind of looking, this isn't like switching tires, this isn't oil change, there's no, um, product or material that's being stored on site. This, there's no paint room, this is auto service. Um, and I will let the applicant, obviously, because I don't do this, speak a little bit more to their operation, but this is very low-impact auto services where cars will be stored inside by appointment. No cars are proposed to be stored outside. And the applicant also has another location, I believe in Holland, is that correct? Where they, they sell, um, kind of custom high-end cars, I'll let them speak to that. If, if you are familiar with their site, this is nowhere near the scale with, with cars, you know, displayed for sale, this would be kind of ancillary to the sales that are happening in Holland, um, and would be a different service. This is a special use, so we have noticed this to the applicant, or to the neighbors. And, you know, obviously, we have one neighbor here, one representative, one person representing, one of the condo associations called, asked for the, uh, the information. I explained the timeline, asked them to give us any comment beforehand. Emailed everything over to him, and I said, you know, if you have any comments, please give them back by this date, and he said, no. Mostly, everyone was concerned about fumes and noise and vibration, you know, related to this use, but after looking at what the applicant has provided, it doesn't seem that we have any issues. I'll get ahold of you if anybody brings anything up. So we did get inquiries without complaint. I assume that if there was complaint, that they would have been here. I am, I have provided the staff review, this, this staff review is actually in paper form in front of you as well. There is a draft motion for approval, and I think it's important in this case that because we're approving, a, in operation that, that mentions sales and services of cars, that we really say this approval is consistent with the scale that was proposed, um, in this application, and is not grounds in to do whatever they want. The, and the applicant, you know, has provided this information, and it's very clear that the scale of this approval is not for sales of cars or any type of auto, um, operations outside of what they've included in their narratives. Does the planning commission have any other questions for staff?
Any questions for staff?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and give us a little rundown on what, just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Cole Matthews, uh, my address is six thirty-eight Allegan Street, Sagittawatt, Michigan. So our proposed use here is for an auto spa and PPF facility, uh, more emphasis on the PPF. PPF is paint protection film, um, it's clear film adhesive backed. Basically, we fit it to the car to protect from rock chips and swirls. Uh, we don't intend to do any kind of painting or anything like that on site. Um, it's, it's strictly going to be an auto spa and PPF facility.
Okay.
So.
Uh, window tinning?
Uh, yep, window tinning.
Okay. Final rap?
Yep.
Okay, and obviously probably car, car detailing in and out?
Yep, uh, we don't intend for the car detailing to be a primary source of business, just kind of an adjacent required service.
Okay. Underbody detailing, engine detailing?
Um, not really, um, primarily, if, we don't really intend to do that level of detail here, this would mostly be new car, new car, new car prep, kind of thing like that.
Question, you say new car prep, is it like new car delivery then?
No, um, if somebody buys a car from a dealer and they want it done, they'll bring it to us with a few miles on it, and we'll do our services to it, so.
And no outdoor storage?
No.
No car sales?
No car sales, no, that's at our other facility.
No engine modifications, transmission?
No, no, no mechanical services like that.
I did, I think I noticed that you'll have, sometimes there'll be cars that are in the lot overnight and that type of thing, right? Waiting for services the next day.
We're gonna try to put them inside if it's an overnight thing, just for security too.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, we've got a pretty decent sized space there for our intended use, so. Um, we'll have them outside during the day, uh, or waiting pickup, but we don't intend to really store outside.
Okay, I don't have any question, more questions this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Take a motion to go to public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ma'am, this is, when you'd like, if you'd like to come up and speak, please just, just come up to, sorry, just, yeah, come up to the mic and name and address, please, just for the record, thank you.
Uh, my name is Bonnie Wisnew Jacob, and I live at Forest Hills Condos. And, um, perhaps I am, um, myself misinformed of where this is anticipated to be. Is it supposed to be, are they looking to put this business out by where, uh, by G and W behind the bank?
Do you know where that boot camp, uh, you know, you got Thornapple Brewery, then the Fit Body Boot Camp, they'll be on the backside of.
Exactly, and that's why I'm here.
Yep.
Uh, because I happen to live right around the corner there. I don't think there's, um, enough room for it. Uh, I don't think it would help beautify the area. Uh, that, um, in that strip mall, we have a nice group of, um, uh, family restaurants, and they did have a fitness in there. So we, I know that we have the Auto Zone that came in the corner, and so, okay, then, you know, that's okay, but to say to consider going beyond the boot camp, to go on the backside, that's gonna wrap around, and I don't know if it. I'm sorry?
It's in the existing building, I just want you to understand that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, hon.
The, it's in the existing building, so they're not adding on to the building at all. It's the empty spot behind Fit Body that used to be AK Rick's storage. So they're not adding anything on, and it already has a garage door on it.
Okay, so then, uh, then my misunderstanding, then, so they're going to retrofit that area, correct?
No.
And then.
Yeah.
Let me use, if I may. Up there.
For real.
Yeah, so, yeah, right where her hand is, it's a building, that building's right there, and there's a garage door, and they're, and they're gonna pull the cars into that building.
Okay.
And then do all their work in there, and the work is, is mostly like spray powder guns, a big plastic film they put over the car, or they'll do like, um, a buffing machine.
He might come work for you.
But they, you know, the work all inside, and they won't store any, the only cars will be parked, you know, or hot out there, or like, so, like, holy moses. So there's not, not anything to the building, this is, um. Your trees, onesy, I think, here and doing that, but, um.
Well, that'd be, I would, our, man, the brain, the tune, I went for the run. I guess my concern was that, um, we didn't want a used car lot coming in.
Right, yeah. None of us want, neither do we, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're with you.
And there's gonna be no oil changes, we're just, it's.
Right.
It's said to be like detailing.
Right, and hopefully it will have high security because of the vehicles they're working on, which will hopefully help the area.
And, and, and just so you know, last year, and I respect the family a lot, but Doug DeVoss was out there, and I said no to a Kia dealership right here in Cascade, so, yeah, we don't, yep. Yep. Unless it's a BMW dealership. So, no, any other concerns, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Does any, you bet, you bet, nope. Uh, does anybody else have any thing they wanna, anything else in their public comment with, or the shit, please? Sure. Name and address, please.
Sure, no problem, Steve Bennett, six-two-four-five Lincoln Shire Court. So at first, this is a little bit misrepresented by how I read it, new or used automobile service center, which is not the case.
Right.
I was thinking like another Tuffy or Berberg's, you know?
Yep.
So just a few questions, was this a temporary variance or would it be a permanent thing?
Probably a special.
Be just for this.
Yeah, just for them, right? Yeah, it's a special use permit, so they're coming in, they're saying, listen, we'd like an exception to.
Sure. So the place next to it, if they go out, then we won't have another place going in, another place, and fibers down the road, all car places.
They would have to come in and ask for that, yep.
Same price.
Yes.
Okay. And then, so no more work in the future, no more expansion, just to stick with what they've already addressed? Like, they won't go into a body shop next year and?
We, we'll, I'm gonna put that in, we're gonna put that in, yeah.
When we make the motion, we'll make sure there's.
Make sure.
I live right next to it, so.
Listen, yeah, we're gonna make sure they can't sell cars, they can't park them for sale signs, they can't do body shop, they can't do any, yeah, they can't, yeah.
No, no disrespect on Tuffy, they've been here a long time, but. And then I live right next to it, so the very west side, I'm in the first row of condos. There's a row of pine trees that have been there for years, they raised them up, so now the headlights are a real pain in the, you know what, every morning, night. Is there any way you can have them look at putting just a simple wood fence up along that side? Because now with the increased traffic and cars, we may have cars sitting there running, warming up, and the headlights literally go right into our windows, it's pretty annoying. I'm not sure if.
That would have to be the, the owner of the.
That can be a condition of approval for this, there's.
We could talk about bushes or.
Correct. Yes.
Those pine trees all there, and they used to cover things great, and now they cut them all, and now it's just all trunks, then they're dying, and and I live, I don't know, a hundred feet away, and it's like, God, turn your lights off, and, you know, it's just quite annoying, so. I'm not, I, this is not what this meeting's about, but maybe you could contact the strip mall.
Thank you for bringing that.
Exactly what is up the meetings.
Yeah.
So. More traffic, more headlights, more lights, more annoyance, so maybe a fence or something with that. And that's pretty much all I had except for the noise, but everything's gonna be inside, as I understand. So we're not gonna hear stuff outside, and that big drums of paint and fans and exhaust.
And if you hear that, call the township and complain, right? If, if there is.
Right.
I'm a car guy, right? There's unnecessary car revving engines, right, I get it, I get it, but like, call and complain, like, be a good neighbor, but if, if they're being disruptive, call the township and let us know, because we'll send our guys out there and, hey, guys, dial it in, yeah.
Just with delivery, flatbeds, wreckers coming in, five in the morning, diesels, headlights, I don't know, if it's gonna be all drive-in vehicles or delivery, but just stuff to consider with the noise and the, the lights would be the best thing that I have to question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something you wanted to?
I'm just gonna make a comment.
Yeah.
Hope you represent the owner.
Come up, come up to the mic and name and address, please, yeah.
Uh, Doug Todd with Lacuna Commercial Advisors at sixty-two thirty-one West River Drive. Um, I represent the owner of the property as their asset manager. Uh, we had secured the property back in January, and, uh, if you, I mean, you're familiar with it, but that property eight years ago was kind of rough shape, both for a tenant mix and, and condition of the building, and the last seven or eight years, it's been completely reinvested with new roofs, parking lots. You know, we picked up where they left off and take a lot of pride in the property. We're also pretty impressed and pleased with the quality of calls we get on that plaza. You know, we get a significant number of calls and super excited to attract the Speed Collection, a real high-end, uh, organization, so we were real pleased with the fit with that, and then even.
Are you willing to do some sort of privacy screening on that?
Yeah, and I think that was just general maintenance, I mean, we've, we've actually increased.
More than maintenance, it's that buffer area between the parking lot and the condo association specifically. When they built the apartments on the other side, I'm assuming the apartment complex area put in buffer screening, but there isn't any, like he said, the pine trees are cut high, and there's, then it ends, so there's several condos that don't have any buffer screening. Are you willing to do something?
Yeah, we'll go take a look at that, I think that was just delayed maintenance, so trimming, trimming some dead branches on the lower end is, I believe where that's at, but I'll go check that out, and and so there wasn't intent to remove any screening by any means, it was just doing delayed maintenance.
She's just saying, like, would you look at it?
Yep.
Be a good neighbor.
Absolutely, is the question, because, um, the carports sit down, um, significantly lower than the parking lot up above, and so there, there's some pine trees, maybe five or so, that have been cut up high and look like they're half-dead.
Okay.
And then the rest of them that do have condos facing them into that parking lot don't have any screening there whatsoever. So just wondering if that's something you guys are willing to.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, we had not noticed that at all, so.
Just looking through there, there today, I noticed, and I was like, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so just like a heads up, right, we, if we have, um, we have, you know, owners that are willing to work with their neighbors, right? And if you do put some privacy fencing in there, just give Andrea a call and, hey, just FYI, wanna let you know, we planted some tiers of pitchers, right? She relays that to us, and then years down the road, when you're back in front of us for something, we work with people that work for us.
We can make a condition.
Understand.
Okay?
Yeah.
Make it a condition of.
Yeah.
There's a good chance that there is a previously approved landscaping plan that the applicant, that the owner of the property is still bound by.
Okay.
So we can look into that, but most certainly, we have requirements for landscaping.
Yeah.
That it is completely appropriate for the planning commission to condition that.
That's where I'm going, and I think that it, I think it should be a condition of some sort, and and I personally think it should be privacy screening, whether it be natural bushes, you mentioned, um, privacy fence, but I think the bushes are something natural, tends to look better in the area than a sterile privacy fence.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, we were completely unaware of that, that feedback, we had no idea. So we were just taking care of delayed maintenance on the property, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good, come up to the mic so we can, yeah.
Need to have louder mics back in there, I'm going deaf. Um, and I'm, I changed my mind a little bit after that gentleman, um, brought out that there aren't gonna be vehicles that are gonna be towed in.
Uh, yeah, that was, he brought that up, and I'm gonna bring the applicant back up and ask him that question.
The, um, we're all familiar with the area there, uh, you have the Thornapple Brewery, which is a phenomenal place. They're expanding there, they also serve during the warmer months on the outside. And so they've also expanded off to the side. That area where the mall comes in, and you have to get back to the back area, that's not a large, considering if you're gonna have a, a U-Haul, or you're gonna have a, a truck trailer come in hauling something, they need a little bit of room to come in and turn around, and the fumes, and I don't want it to destroy the nice little eating area that you have in that entire plaza, not only Thornapple Brewery, but on the front side that faces the, the parking lot, on the other side, they have a little Mexican restaurant and the, the Asian one and everything like that. I'm all for free enterprise, but boy, I sure would hate to have the, that destroyed by having a great big semi coming in, and and there's, if there was a, another way to get in and out of there, perhaps, that would be an alternative, but there is not. There's only that one way in and out. And so I'm very concerned about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, uh, make a motion to go to close public, you have, sorry, go ahead.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to bring the applicant back up. So, great question back there, that was initiated by you and I, you know, so how, explain to us how this is gonna work? I mean, is it, some of the vehicles I'm sure are gonna be driven in, some are gonna be trailered in, how's it?
Yep, so the majority will be driven in, um, we do have our own trucks and trailers and an enclosed, um, flatbed semi.
Okay.
Or not semi, a tow truck.
Yeah.
Um, so, but the kind of work we do is usually longer term, um, it's like a, it's usually a three to ten-day project. Um, so the cars are at our facility for a fairly long term, so it's not a high, high density of cars coming in every day.
Okay.
So it'd probably be two to four cars in and out a day, kind of thing, so very, very low traffic.
So how are the, so if you bring it in, in a, and I don't, I don't wanna use the word semi, because it's not a semi, right?
Yeah.
It's like, yeah.
It's like the trailer.
Tow truck, yeah.
So, are you gonna be able to make the turn back there, are you gonna unload them in the front parking lot?
Yeah, there's plenty, we've been actually back there with the tow truck, there's plenty of room in the back area.
Okay.
That, that, that whole rear parking lot's unutilized by the, the other tenants, so there's plenty of room back there for that.
And then, um, hours of drop-off and delivery, I mean, can, can they be reasonable? I mean, two o'clock in the morning, I don't.
No, no, yeah, we'll just have standard, standard hours, kind of a, a ten to six kind of situation.
Okay, so that, and that's when they'll be dropped off, ten to six?
Yeah, we won't have, we don't wanna have people there all hours of the day, so.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend that the planning commission, no, put that into the conditions.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any other questions?
None for me.
No, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What hours did he say?
Ten to six, but we can probably massage that a little bit. Yeah, whatever, or what, I mean, what, what's reasonable?
Five, six.
We're not totally set on a, a schedule yet, so I mean.
Daytime business hours?
I would say like nine to six, like, you can do business after that, we just don't want cars dropped off.
Morning lights through people's.
Is that reasonable?
You just intend like semis and loading?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just that?
Yeah.
If people come to pick up, kind of on their own?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I, I would think that's fine, wouldn't you guys think that's nice?
Tow truck and semi.
I mean, if we, if we're using truck and trailer, that's no noise, so.
Sounds if it's a diesel and, um.
Well, our tow truck is a diesel.
That's what I'm saying.
We're using just a F-two-fifty kind of thing, a trailer, that's off very early process, so.
Yeah, make up to the mic, just so we can get it on the record and everything, I thi, I think the concern.
It's kind of the diesel truck.
No, it's just, it, it's not even that, it's just like, five o'clock in the morning, somebody rolls in in a truck.
Yeah.
Or somebody comes in with their, you know, Lambo, and, you know, listen, I'm, obviously, I'm a car guy, right? They come in, oh, this car's sweet, yeah, and they start revving the engine, you're like, come on, guys, it's five in the morning, now, right? Um, and that's, I think that's the thing, we just, we need you to kind of just like, cape, respect the neighbors, make your customer respect the neighbors, so. Um, so I mean, I guess I'm asking like a reasonable, you know, drop-off and pickup with the semi, nine to six? I mean, you can be open from, you know, eight in the morning to eight at night.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to come and pick up their car and driving in and out, I've got no problem with that, but drop off and pick up with the semi, or not semi, but tractor trailer, whatever, how you. Tow trucks, just nine to six, is that reasonable?
If we could do maybe more to seven or so, that might be a little better for us.
Nine to seven?
Yeah. So.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
Thank you. All right, so, discussion.
Overall, I'm okay with it, I just think we need to talk about the, um, conditions that we need to agree to.
Yep. Is anybody, is everybody okay with it?
Mm-hmm.
Other than the conditions?
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of my take too, it seems like a good use for this, but it's, it's. Yeah, so the question that I kind of just had for everyone, and it sounds like everybody has similar concerns, and we want to impose conditions. I just didn't know with like the proposed motion where it's, you know, I think it kind of tracks that approved B-two language. So I know it says like, well, it's subject to scale and operations outlined, but I don't really like, if we don't need to have it, to say, you know, we're permitting a new or used automobile service center.
Yeah.
Really broad, I, I don't know why we wouldn't limit that to language, more like the applicant themselves, you know, today they described it as an auto spa and PPP, and their application, they use the phrase high-end automotive protection and detailing facility, which, you know, I'd rather see like that phrase.
I agree.
And then I think just kind of some of the limitations that everybody's talking about.
Yep.
I hope you're taking notes, because of what you just said, you're gonna have to. I know, was making the motion, you better keep that pen handy for the rest of these.
You got that one.
So we want no car sales, we want no cars with, um, uh, for sale signs?
Yeah, no, definitely no car sales, new or used.
Right.
Um, we wanna add the, um, screen, privacy screening to the west side of the parking lot and building between that and the condo association on the west.
Yep.
And then I think we need to talk about the
Hours.
Drop-off, pick-up hours, um, and whether we have separate limitations for people driving their cars there and back, or dropping off semi slash tow trucks.
I, I, yeah, I also think, uh, no, um, no mechanical, um, how am I gonna word this? Cause you got no used or new sales, but you also have no service.
I think he included that in your whole thing about only doing car detailing.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other term that's already in the proposed would say, like, this use is subject to the scale and operations outlined, oh, and this land use approval. Yeah, okay, uh, I was gonna kind of think like limited, could we just, they have that stated use or something?
Yeah.
I think we need to specify, just because when somebody reads the minutes, it's always a pain when you're going back. Nobody wants to listen to the whole thing, so I think that we need to specify in the motion, it just makes it cleaner when you're going back to look at what was actually approved.
Are we talking about the hours of, hours still?
Specify what? Oh, you mean that, the not, oh, see, I don't, I don't. Oh, you mean that, the not, oh, see, I don't, I don't want the, I, I don't know, I just, does it need to be said? We, we're going to say that you can't sell newer used cars. Doesn't need to be said, said that you can't mechanically service or enhance vehicles as well, right?
I think, I know it seems overkill, but I just think it's easier if somebody's going back and looking at, it's a bit specific.
I, I, yeah, scope creep.
Yep. Um, I would just say to the resident, to that came out, that I, I uh I'm very receptive to all your comments, right? We want the, the owners who live in the area um to feel like this is a good business there. And we, I, I think the owner of the, the site and all the residents want the other buildings to and the other businesses uh, to feel like, hey, this is a good, good business, it attracts more more people to the area. So I, I do hear your concerns. Me personally, just so you know, it sounds to me like the level of drop off or pickup is really just not going to be that big. That this is a smaller detailing center, and if we're talking about even a tow truck coming through there couple times a day, maybe, I just don't, I, I mean, we all frequent that, that shopping center too, and I just can't imagine that as having any kind of real.
I guess.
Personally.
Right, I, I think the privacy screening between the two is more important than worrying about the other tenants or anything within the building and them driving in and out, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go for it.
You want me to make a motion?
You were taking the note.
Nice.
Alright, well done. Do my best, alright, so I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of the special use permit uh, to allow for a high-end automotive protection and detailing facility within the existing commercial strip mall at sixty-two fifty twenty-eighth street southeast for the following reasons. One, changing the property use satisfies the special use permit approval standards outlined in section seventeen point zero six of the Cascade zoning ordinance and with the following conditions. Uh, I'd say first that the use is subject to the scale and operations as outlined in the application. Uh, additional conditions would be a condition uh, on the owner uh, to provide uh, heightened landscape buffer on the west side of the property.
You, you want the owner or do you want?
Yes.
Okay.
Then for the applicant, uh, hours of drop off and pickup um by tow truck uh, or other truck, limited to nine to seven?
Nine AM.
Nine AM to seven PM. No car sales uh, onsite and uh, no typical mechanical auto service.
Repair.
Repair and enhancement. And that's the extent of the motion.
Support.
Somebody go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
Right. We'll just modify the site plan.
Appreciate coming down.
The elements of the condition.
Yeah, if things get, call us if things get, I don't think they will, but.
I think you're going to be fine.
We'll never know, right? I think Cole will keep a real close eye on it.
Yeah.
Long time, like oh forty years. That mall struggles to be as productive as it gives.
Yeah.
You know, and um, I would hate to have anything um changed that so that it would not be a nice place to go.
Right.
To take your family over there. Also, the concern for the traffic depends how busy they get.
Yeah.
If um, traffic might get big on that uh, on the half of between lint and chatter and uh, where it was somewhere. We shall see.
Yeah, hope for the best, thank you.
Cole, that'd be a heck of a spot for a car show too, you know, coffee and cars, kind of.
It's not subject to Landry's approval, you're going to have to come back for that.
Well, I just, I think that it would be good for the businesses there too, all the restaurants and stuff. They would shake, you know, that kind of Jesus. Debbie Downer, yeah, no fun.
All about rules, come on, the program.
All about. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you for your comments. Alright, article number eight, thank you.
That's good.
Case number two-five uh, three-eight-nine-four, uh, live space, Ben Cobb.
Alright, the next item for the planning commission is address four-nine-nine-five, five Star Street. The applicant is requesting an expansion to the parking lot and then on the southwest side of the property. Um, this is an existing industrial building, that's, I don't know exactly when it was built, probably, I'm going to guess in the eighties from the appearance of the building. It was approved for a um, an ex, four thousand square foot expansion in two thousand twenty. However, at that time, the parking calculation, landscaping, um, and other uh, elements of, of site plan approval were not addressed. Um, I've now found that this site is underparked and the applicant is asking for um, additional impervious surface um, on that south, the southwest side of the property. I do want to know that um I visited the site a, an hour ago, and unfortunately, the applicant had, or someone, I assume the applicant has already began construction, which is not necessarily a violation, depending on what they're doing, but they are dropping off all of the stormwater um underground um, equipment for this project, so I, I hope that the applicant has plans for all of that, if in fact the planning commission decides that this isn't the appropriate, appropriate use, could potentially be addressed. Um the applicant is still underparked even with the um, requested expansion to the parking lot, so I do find that the addition of the parking is, is appropriate. Um, the applicant has also submitted a stormwater plan to the township engineer who has reviewed that and has recommended that the planning commission approve this based on the fact that they are bringing the site further into compliance. Um, the addition, which is, uh, if you can see my cursor, which is, which was added to the north side of the building, um, is actually um, impeding onto the stormwater detention pond. Um, so that part is not compliant, however, they are um, increasing stormwater detention on the site overall. Um, the applicant um it most, the, the main goal of the planning commission at this meeting, um, everything that the, the applicant has applied for is an administrative um, site would usually be approved via administrative site plan review, however, because they are asking for a decrease in the depth of the landscaping buffer on the south side of the property. I don't have the authority or the, or the planning staff doesn't have the authority to do that, the planning commission has the authority to decrease a, uh, the depth of of a buffer. So the applicant is asking that the planning commission approve their site plan with the reduction um, in the required buffer yard. If you can see um the applicant i- is, there's currently impervious surface in this area that exists. So really, the decrease um, in the buffer is for the new area that the applicant is proposing um, to expand. I did ask the applicant to provide information on um why they are requiring such a large access area. If you can see here typical two-way access um, in a parking lot is about twenty-six feet, depending on the, the um dimension of the parking and the, the angle of the parking. So the, the site is compliant with the access um, aisles required on the south side of the property and on the east side of the property. However, they are requesting a large impervious surface area, and it's not exactly clear why, because they are requesting parking spaces um, added to the south um side of the parking lot, but have not really explained if this is going to be used for storage. Um, I did explain to the applicant that if in fact they do want to use this for outdoor storage, that that's a special use and it could not be handled at this hearing because that needs to be noticed to the neighbors. Um, all in all, the applicant has provided additional landscaping to the site when looking at the two thousand uh, the two thousand twenty, I'm sorry if I've been saying two thousand, the approval was in two thousand twenty for the four thousand square foot addition to the south side of the building. The applicant did provide a landscaping plan at that time, but I don't see any evidence that the um, landscaping that was approved at the two thousand twenty approval was ever added to the site, so um staff is recommending that landscaping, um, a landscaping bond be required in accordance with the cost of the development. And staff will make sure that this is continuously monitored and that um, their final approval won't be given until that all the landscaping is in place. Inside of that, the applicant, there is a chart um, on page three of your staff review that explains where the parking or where the um, where the landscaping is deficient. There is deficient uh, landscaping on the east side of the property. The applicant did actually try to expand that um, that um, green space there, but because of the access i- aisle and part of the fact that Star, the private road, you know, is mostly on their actual property, they were not able to bring that fully into compliance with the standard, with the plant material requirements of our um, landscape of, of a C, um, it's called, it's considered a um, C buffer area. However, they have provided additional landscaping on, on many of the other sides, so when it comes to plant material staff finds the additional landscaping provided in other spaces on the site adequate to make up for the few missing trees um, on the east side. Um, but ultimately, that decision is up to the planning commission. I guess that's my big, that, that's my big spiel. I don't know that I have anything else. If the planning commission has any questions for staff.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. It's on page thirty-one in the packet, it's the first C two zero one plan, and it looks like the shaded area to the south and, and well, let's see, I, I'm going to, based on looking at this, I would say east. But that's the portion that they're looking at, black topping in.
Over here, the west.
Let me look at what you're looking at.
So C two O one is the existing condition.
Okay.
If you flip to the next page.
Yeah.
That's what they propose, the additional impervious surface.
So all that black right there, okay?
Yes.
Oh, uh, so it's just that little cutout, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
This here.
Okay, alright. Okay, jeez. Okay.
Staff did go a little bit back and forth about the fact that the site is already almost fully, you know, impervious surface and that the, one of the only areas that does have um, area where recharge areas for water runoff is now going to be paved again. These are factors, that's, and additionally, staff did ask the applicant to be prepared to explain why they want so much impervious surface and why they want that dry aisle. So large.
Okay.
Do we know if they completed the stormwater improvements they were supposed to in twenty?
I do not.
Just wondering, because it doesn't look like, obviously none of the lands, I don't know if anybody drove out there, but obviously none of the landscaping's been touched. It doesn't look like in twenty twenty, and I'm just wondering if the actual improvements that were supposed to have been done in twenty twenty were done to the retention pond back then, or if now we're saying we're going to do them now and we never really did them in the meantime?
There was a different, the, the follow-up on Landry's approvals was, was different at the time. We have an in-house engineer now who usually now goes out and does final site zoning um, approvals with me. Um I, but we don't know, yeah, on previous, we do not go, you know, to this point, we have not went back out, outside of noticing that landscaping is missing. We have not went back out and tried to enforce um, previously not, you know, completed site plans unless they come to our attention.
So I have a question for you, Andrea. So I, as I understand it, we, we would have to find basically that a physical hardship exists um, to approve lessening of the buffer yard. I, I guess I didn't see that articulated really in, in the, the report, though, what it looks like to be is because of the existing impervious um, surface. I mean, they're not trying to shrink the impervious surface on the south side, right? I mean, they're just like, well, we already have all this concrete or asphalt down on the south side, so there just isn't, unless they reduce it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, with, with the dimensions.
But they're adding to the west of it, correct?
Yes.
So, so I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. To the south, they're not adding to their impervious surface, but they are to the southwest section because they're adding further to the west, which will add, I don't know how many feet it will be to the southwest. Are you following me?
I am following you.
So we're making them more non-compliant than they currently are non-compliant.
So the applicant could provide that twenty-foot buffer. We wouldn't then require that they tear out the existing spa- parking spaces and redo the area that they've already done. There is a situation where for the new impervious surface, they have to jot up
Yeah.
so that there's that twenty foot.
In that area.
Buffer area, correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for staff?
Not right, yeah.
Is the applicant here? Please come up, name and address, please.
Yeah, Jack Bar with Niederfeld. Uh, I accidentally told our client the meeting started at seven, so he'll be rolling in here a little bit late, I'm going to have to apologize to him. Um, can we start with um, I haven't been out there in two months, so you went out there yesterday or today and like
This morning.
Was, is there physical activity, like pavements tore up or just machines stored?
Physically, activity that
Okay.
Create to the west of the building is all being torn up, there's multiple dump trucks and
Yep.
um, es, whatever those excavating lot.
Bobcats?
Yeah, little bobcats.
Those and those
That
concrete.
And they don't have, do they have a permit to do that, Andrea?
So this is, you don't actually need a permit to, building department doesn't require a permit to do landwork. We run into issues, you know, you need a site plan approval, approval to change your, your parking lot. There's no building permit, you need to go out there and, and actually get this work done. There's a trigger of, you know, an acre of movement of dirt before Eric gets keyed in for, you know, so, stormwater. I, I don't know, do you know if they have the stormwater soil erosion permits through the county yet?
I don't.
So.
I know Eric's issued approval, but what I'm thinking might be happening is the pavement that's there, part of the site plan is to remove that pavement that's there and replace it. So maybe they were, no matter, if you said no, they were still going to replace that pavement in the back because it's deteriorated. That's the only thing I could think of is that they were getting a jumpstart on the demo so that they could at least get their current pavement replaced. But we can ask him when he gets here.
Yeah, they have about four large
We're curious about that.
Trucks out there. When I went, they had about four large trucks unloading all of the material for the groundwork.
Okay. And then as far as the um, south property line the existing pavement, we're holding that same edge, we're moving what's there but holding that same edge. And if we jog it north to meet the setback, then we can't provide the parking numbers that we need so that on the plan, we're showing additional parking along that entire south line. And if we jogged up to meet the buffer yard, then we would lose five to six parking spaces there.
Good question about that, so it looks like the only parking you're doing is on that south lot line or line. What is the rest of all this concrete for then? Why do you need it?
Yeah, before I answer that, there
Parking, because I, you know, that's, there, this is so convoluted, but it's frustrating because when it, when the building was expanded, there should have been additional parking requirements that were put in at that point in time and they weren't. And so now, we're talking about expanding a parking lot, but it's not for parking to actually meet the parking requirements because we're only adding Because we're only adding four parking spots to the bottom of there. The rest of this is just concrete for some other reason. What is it?
So they do space prep, A V and stage prep, so you have a concert downtown. Their business is to set up all the acoustics and all of the stage work, so they have trucks that. Their own trucks that come in in that back area, load and have to try to spin back around and get out. And right now, if you go back to the existing conditions plan, they don't really have room to make those that maneuver. So the additional pavement will provide maneuverability for them to get to get back out of there. And to park their trucks in between times when they're they're not out on assignment, but no outside. One of the comments earlier was about outside storage, not not proposed. So if they're parking vehicles back there, it would be. You know, their delivery vehicles. So it's strictly a maneuvering space, extra elbow room. That they just don't have right now. It's very tight back there and the pavements. Pavement back there is. Needs to be replaced. We are changing the parking in front of the building, not tearing out the pavement, but re-striping. On the east side of the building to get more efficient with the parking. And then. The other question came up earlier on the stormwater, so. How we recalculate that and presented it to Eric was. We don't know the history on this property, like when it got built, the stormwater standards were totally different, so. And in fact, the the current condition, the back, all the pavement west of the building just flows onto the neighbor's property. It doesn't make it to the detention basin. The only thing goes to the detention basin right now is the roof of the building. So all of that pay, existing pavement, just sheet flows off, heads west onto the neighbor to the west property. So with this expansion, we'll be putting a curb line. On the west side of our pavement to collect and control that and then put a catch basin in that curb line and then the pipe that'll direct it to the. Detention basin, so we'll be. Providing more detention volume than is there now, so the calculations we did were, okay. Here's what the whole site needs and let's try to, let's get that water to where it needs to go, and then we're expanding that detention basin. Size.
I'm just looking at some pictures that I took earlier and then that Andrea took. It almost does look like they expanded to the west already. Because the pictures you took were from the front from Star Road.
Yeah, I just went out there at about five thirty and I couldn't even get onto the site because there was so much site.
Like they actually have started groundwork off to the west.
Come up and state your name and address, please.
Because where you you can't get to is where I was parked earlier. I was parked in the in the. The previously approved southwest corner of the parking lot. And now she couldn't get there because there, the dirt to the west of that is all excavated up. And there was multiple, I mean, there was three or four Mack trucks.
So, so you're doing before it's been approved?
Yeah, so they were not supposed to start as they had, so then. Yeah, so when they showed up, we basically pushed back and said, hey, we need to wait for approval, especially of the expansion. And then they they basically said to us and what it's been communicated to us is if there is no. Change in the layout, then we can resurface.
But they did change the layout. It looks like they've expanded to the west of the south.
Well, as of now, they have not. And and I even have, we could show footage from this morning.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to.
Hang on, pull up the pictures that I sent you earlier because it's a bad picture, but I'm sitting in that southwest corner. And then the pictures where you're at. So this is.
So here's where she was.
This is the southwest.
There was grass.
I was sitting up here.
Then when I went out there.
So I was sitting here on the.
They've already. Put dirt in or pushed her, I mean, they have the.
I mean, simply, I would. Yeah, and I would simply say that what they did, ma'am. Is they they took out this here, and if you went out there right now, this is, this grass still exists. And they were still working, I mean, as you know. That that is this right here.
Now there's the end of the wall, the building.
Yeah, so the end of the building is right here. It is. They, this grass still exists, ma'am. I one thousand percent know it does. They were still working, but we told them to stop. And not touch anything beyond this region.
Why don't you? I I do think that he may be right. I want to make sure. Here is the building, yeah, and if you can see the.
I, can I share or no?
Just have to get the password for this and I don't want to be like.
Put it on the video. Don't we have the video that we could?
Yeah, I'm I'm really sorry, like, we didn't want this to be a contentious thing and and this thing just, the timeline kind of got away from us. I even have a drone shot that we took this morning and I'd love to share that with you too. Because I was like, I was so excited to come to this meeting and show the expansion because of the the need. Where am I? Here.
We'll we'll zoom it, we'll zoom it in.
You can kind of see the corner of the building, yes, they did disturb all of this, but this white portion, which is, this, this is all still. And because we know that what we're asking for is to get rid of this, and so we we were simply like, we cannot disturb this area and. And again, like, I don't do, I don't do construction like this professionally. But yeah, you can see, so they basically stopped at the building line and you can see the grass beyond here. It, that that is all still held, so we have not disturbed that additional space. But really, let me just show you if you don't mind what. This was taken this morning and I thought I would just show you. We have so many trucks, we did five events this weekend, we did all the events for Art Prize, we did two events for Calvin. And we're literally just, all these different colors are just things that are moving in and around this space. And so, yes, we, this, this concrete is now dirt, but this still remains. And what we need is to be able to move all of these trucks around. Again, these are rental trucks, we, they ebb and flow with our business. We do a lot of work with Corwell, we're always doing events that are hopefully elevating us to to another level. And the logistics is is tightening in on us. Originally, you know, we we're not gonna push any further than we exist here. We just need to be able to move semis around here. We used to be doing this with one semi or one box truck, and now that we've grown and Grand Rapids has grown. Our business just requires more logistics, and so it's more semis for us. We're doing, we just. We just had an event last last week in San Diego, California that we shipped semis to. It's, that's the need. I understand that this is just a wildly inconvenient. And irresponsible way to deploy something like this. It's obnoxious for us to be viewed this way. If I'm honest, it's unfortunate that you saw the before and you saw the after within eight hours. And and we're definitely not trying to be aggressively obnoxious people, we're just. We we needed it, we needed it fixed before winter, which is why we want to just like leave the site immediately. And yes, we, in hindsight, we probably should have told them to just hold off for another.
To remove your current pavement and replace it, there is no requirement, there is no permit that's required at the township. So obviously, we would have loved to call, but I don't know that we have any. Looking at the boundaries, I don't think that they. Increase the impervious surface. Again, I couldn't get out there.
They're not there paving anyway, they're out there prepping and tearing stuff up is what it sounds like.
We just don't want them tearing up.
And changing.
We've had a couple of developers that have come in and put buildings up when they didn't have the permits. So it's not you. It's the five guys in front of you that have ruined it for you.
I fully appreciate that, and again, I apologize that we are squeaky clean on this. We we've been doing our damnedest, we're a small company, we've been doing our damnedest to to stay in line, we, you know, we paid all the smart people to do all the right things. And that's a lot of money for us, and we're trying to do the the best thing to stay here as as long as we can, so.
Do you know if the stormwater was improved in twenty twenty with the previous approval? The stormwater pond.
I have those drawings. I don't personally know that. I do know that. We, there was an additional drain that was tied into the city sewer. I only know that because the building.
I just, I think, just tell me if I'm wrong, Andrea, looking at the previous approval from twenty twenty. I think that they were supposed to increase their retention pond during twenty twenty as well.
I can answer that, so. We couldn't find a record of that, Eric couldn't find a record of that, like I said earlier, we assumed it didn't. And with this proposed plan, the calculations we gave Eric was. We're gonna take all this existing and proposed pavement. And bring it to the detention pond and upsize the detention pond for all of that. So in the roof, we did confirm with Eric that the roof water does have three or four downspouts that go into the pond.
It's just, again, going back to reputation, it's frustrating that you are in front of the planning commission in twenty twenty. And that part of that approval as well was increasing the retention pond based on the addition at that time that does not look like that was done.
Ma'am, to be honest with you, I'd have to do more research into why, but but I I don't know.
But, right, but I'm just saying, again. We have people come in front of us all the time that tell us, yeah, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, and unfortunately, his. Historically Cascade has been really bad on the backend to make sure. And we are trying desperately right now to make sure that things are brought up to compliance after and. And completed the way that they are presented to the planning commission after the fact, not. You can't give empty promises, and I I just think it goes back to Alan's thing about historically, you know. What people have done and your business in particular has not followed through either.
And, well, Wendy, we could protect against that with a bond, right?
Right, which means even more of a bond, which again means you you will not be able to increase your parking lot. Until we would get a surety bond for the landscaping requirements and the retention pond is what you're saying, right?
So that's a, just so unclear, that's a dollar amount that we give you until we pass.
Yeah, until everything is complete, because in the past, one, they were like. Couple hundred bucks, which is ridiculous because nobody can plant a bunch of trees for a couple hundred dollars. And so nobody, they just didn't collect them at the end, they just didn't do it. And so now we need to put things into place to make sure that they are being completed on the backend. And if they're not, then we have the money from you to be able to pay to get those completed.
Understood. Yeah, and is is there a chance that that stormwater? Pond was increased? Because we did all of the landscaping.
Nobody knows.
I mean, that was you back then, that.
Yeah, it it was, I mean, I wasn't the contractor, I would, you know, I represent the owner of the building. But I I could not say that it is. I could not with definitive, I could not say it's larger today than it was before.
Well, in my understanding from you is that. The plan that you've proposed takes into consideration. It takes into consideration the previous expansion to the building and the new impervious surface for the parking lot, so it would correct. Both of them if it was not done because it at least meets the current standards for both of those.
Yes, correct.
Understood it, and I can say in front of you, apart from any ridiculous. Number, I would be absolutely willing to to pay that. It is our full intention to do this as drawn with the highest quality, like. I can tell you that when we did that addition, I knew even less, and we knew even less, and we're we're kind of learning through this process. And so absolutely, if that's what's required to just move forward, then we will absolutely do that, and we will be held responsible to to what we will get.
And Andrea, just to clarify too, the. It would make the the buffers. Reduced compared to what is. Just that one new section, because the already is, the old is already existing, but, sorry to touch you over. See screening when it comes to plantings. They can't add what would be required to the east side because of the location of the current pavement that's already there, they just can't do it. But those trees would be then put elsewhere on the lot. To make up for.
Yes, the applicant has dispersed those. Plantings throughout the site.
In other areas.
There's still, I mean. They're still off by a little bit, like they replaced maybe twenty shrubs with three, three trees with twenty twenty shrubs or something, but. It's comparable and adequate.
Just saying too that. Northwest side, you should be putting some big old trees up in there. I don't know if you, anybody else drove through there, but. I think your neighbors are parking on your.
Yeah, that picture you were just showing, you can continue to show that. See if it stays focused, it's probably gonna start all over.
They're definitely right on.
I think they're, I think they're over.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, yeah, there's definitely, we know that we would have some additional trees in this area and then obviously along along here too.
Yeah, and the west side. The full west side. Yeah, so that, and then keep going to the northwest, you would continue them through there.
Oh, that's your neighbors there, I see.
That was very helpful, by the way, your, what the pictures you had in your high tag was very helpful for me, because I was trying to get the backside of the building, so.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, for context, this is our one and only dock. So the only access we have is to go around this corner into dock access there, and we not only. Not only do we do outbound inbound logistics for our own gear for events, but there's, we also receive shipments, so there's just. A decent amount of traffic that moves through there. And right now, there's no way we can get. It it's just very tight.
How many employees do you have?
Twenty-three.
So where do they park?
Right now?
No, even in this, because you still don't have that many parking spots, do you?
Well, the new one has twenty-four on the drawing, but we were gonna add four more because I think we were required to have twenty-eight. So if I jump up here. That we get substantially more to you, Willikers. We get substantially more angled parking. Along this back. Area here, and then we would add any additional parking needed, just angled back here, so we have more spots that we're adding here. All along here, a couple up here, that would bring us, you know, to the numbers needed.
Which which is where they're parking now, by the way, I just, I just did a Google Maps and you can see cars parked in there all along the side.
I can't say on record, I would describe this area as.
Well, we're doing our best with what we have.
I get it, and it's not you, all of it. Your neighbors behind you have quite the mess.
Our intention is to is to be here for a long time, and I know that there's some sort of future development note that Andrea mentioned to Ben at one point. We want to be good members of society, we want to give back, we want to be a part of events for Cascade in the future, we want to be a part of this whole thing. We definitely don't want to be the people where you see live space and you're like, oh my god, those guys, like, that's not who we want to be. That's why we've tried to do this the right way. Yesterday really screwed that up. But hopefully we can, we can get it right going forward, whether it's with the the bond or whatever it takes to.
Questions for the applicant?
I just think it's great to expand, if your business is that good.
We need any other questions for the applicant?
I have one question. Who sets the bond amount?
Staff will. Open to staff to calculate based on the trees. And the shrubs and all of that, and stormwater piece, so it will be up to them. We would make a recommendation. For staff to set that dollar amount based on the plans that are presented to us.
Alright, uh this is not open for public hearing, right, so. Conversations, I mean thoughts? I I'll be honest, when I first saw this, I was like, oh boy, right, or or blacked out. But now that I saw the pictures and what they're trying to do, I mean, at least the backtops on the black part of the building.
Whole front's already paved.
Yeah, we're getting some trees that weren't done, we're getting an expansion on the pond, which is good, I mean. I'm more eased with this than I was an hour ago.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like somebody willing, you know, they're trying to invest in their business, they're trying to invest in the space. There's a lot of reasons that staff outlined that it's. Engineering and. Stormwater. Improvement. Standpoint, so. I was struggling a little bit with whether I could. Could uh find it, like, if this is really the task, that we have to find that a physical hardship exists. For them to have this reduced barrier, uh but looking at it and hearing all those things, I mean, I I'd be willing to. I wouldn't, I don't think it's fair to ask them to have to cut back what's already asphalted. Or concrete, it makes sense, and they justify why they would need to continue it, and that's where the parking spaces are gonna go. And so I I just see a lot of positives overall, really, I had some concerns myself, but. Improving parking, improving some of these buffer zones. Proving the stormwater.
It's not creating a bigger, some large eyesore thing, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, so that's not an issue that we have that we have to be worried about there on complying with the stormwater. Which is really important to me, or us, I assume, and uh complying, and also with the. With the foliage, et cetera, so I don't I don't have any problem.
Question, Andrea, so. When we're approving reduction, the buffer yard, that we don't need to notice those neighbors that would be. It's not considered a special use for employers, no.
So I have a question for you, Andrea, too, like. I have a hard prime times stretching this for hardship reasons, but are there other reasons that we can use? That are more appropriate or special use or something, I mean, I just don't see.
I think the fact that it's an existing site. And that it's bring, it's bringing it more into compliance. It, you know, on the stormwater, on the landscaping.
And because an addition was approved in twenty twenty without additional parking.
I I will say, like, in sites like this, it's really difficult, because we get to a point where we really wanna support businesses, but there becomes a point when it's not about. You know, supporting that business, it's, is this site now appropriate for that business? So to continue to expand outside of what that site can allow for, at that point. It maybe should become more of a conversation of is this site still right, or have we outgrown this space? Versus continuing to push and push and push. A site to its limit, and that's what starts to negatively impact the adjacent neighbors. I don't think we're there, you know, I think the planning commission should consider that, I don't think we're there, but to continue to expand uses. Like that, please know, you know, we hope you grow, but we also wanna make sure that the site is appropriate for the business.
My last kind of question comment, as I'm looking at the proposed recommendation. I mean, this really our landscape bonds is what we're talking about, right, and so I just see that the. Language would say that we're asking staff to set the landscaping bond for the value of the. Proposed trees, like, is that too narrow, or are we kind of bound by that, because we're really talking about this retention pond and everything.
A second. Condition would be also the applicant provides a. Stormwater. I'm just, I can't read my own writing, I wrote it, um, a stormwater improvement. Bond for the value of the proposed stormwater improvements. And I don't think it should say proposed trees, I think it should say proposed landscaping, because it's not just on trees. Is that what you were asking?
Yep, that's exactly, yep.
I'm reading the minutes from the preview from twenty twenty, and you're right, I mean, they expanded it by four thousand and they didn't make them add.
And then they also requested that part of that was the stormwater pond was. Made bigger, and it was, nobody ever followed up on it to make sure that was done, so. I feel like a lot of this is cleanup from a previous twenty twenty approval.
I I also just think that, you know. If for whatever reason, the the current. Company outgrows that space and they leave to another space, I would think that the building is set up for another. I mean, because it's got a good turnaround back there for trucks and whatnot, and.
Or it'll be turned into residential complex.
Yeah, 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 so, okay, I mean, I'm I'm obviously want some stipulations, right? And bond. But I think I'm. Okay with this.
Yeah, I'd be fine with it, it sounds like Wendy, like you came up with an extra condition, so maybe. You'd be the person to make.
That was stay back right there.
Motion to approve case number twenty-five thirty-eight ninety-five, site plan for four nine nine five Star Street Southeast. With the following provisions, the buffer yard depth on the south side of the property. Be reduced to accommodate parking and access on the south side of the existing building, and I'm adding as proposed to that, because that's. Sentence just sounds weird to me. Um furthermore, the following conditions shall be placed on approval, the applicant provides a landscaping bond for the value of the proposed. Landscaping that staff will set based on the drawings that were given to us. And the applicant provides a stormwater improvement bond. For the value of the proposed stormwater improvements. Again, are in this packet, and the applicant. Modifies the twenty twenty stormwater maintenance agreement and records the agreement with Kent County Register of Deeds.
I would just ask for clarification that the. Stormwater bond would also be set an amount determined by staff based on.
Sorry, I didn't add that sentence, that piece to that sentence.
That was good, yeah.
But I would support that.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Alright, uh let's see, article nine, case number twenty-four dash three eight four two. Train Technologies.
Okay, the last item on our agenda at seven seventeen, one hour before the Lions game starts.
Much faster these meetings are without. Certain. Planning Commissioner.
I'm surprised you don't have Honolulu Blue on.
Well, I got a little bit, it's in there. Alright, our next item on the agenda is actually a a modification to two previous buildings that were approved, um. I believe in two thousand eight uh eighteen. Twenty-two, and then just a year ago, there was a large hundred thousand square foot building. Approved on the south side of the property, which is fifty-eight twenty-eight. Um this is for train technologies, so this is a a large scale manufacturer that's been in the township, they have a location over on um. Executive Parkway, um they came in and were approved for this um second. The whole site, oh yeah, it is, thanks for pulling that together, Nick. Uh this is the existing site, or this is the existing building to the north, uh fifty-seven twenty-four, I believe. The just recently. Built hundred thousand square foot building is is just south of there.
When is that one built, just so?
It was uh approved last year, it it July, I believe, of last year, and they. Are just about to get their C of all, they are in construction. The train manufacturing decided that they wanted to um have, it has been designed as a. Kind of campus facility for all of their manufacturing. And they decided that they wanted to connect the two buildings. I will know that um.
It's interesting that they made that decision now instead of a year ago when they brought these plans.
Business is booming.
Yes, business is booming. Uh they're also corporate, though, and I've worked with enough corporate companies that I know that.
Somebody has an idea.
Oh, why don't we do this, oh?
Oh, yes, so this this is not super surprising to me. Because um of kind of the the weirdness and complication of this from both building. Engineering, fire, uh zoning. All this, uh Jack had brought this plan to me, I was like, I actually have no idea, but before we move forward. Let's pull everybody together, and we did have just an internal discussion on whether adding a. Tunnel, so that, just to be clear, what's proposed, this existing hundred thousand square foot building on the south side of the property exists. The change that's coming to the planning commission today is for. The proposed tunnel on the east side of the property that would then connect those two buildings.
So the tunnel goes underground?
No, I say tunnel, it's an above ground tunnel.
I would have proven underground.
There's actually, it goes underground, and then there's like a water slide that swirls, and then there's a conveyor belt. I'm just kidding, none of that is true, that's not on the record. Yes, exactly. So we did have a lot of questions, like, what is this tunnel? And how do we make this happen, so we did find that because of setback requirements and all of that, that we needed to combine the two. Buildings that we can buy in the two properties, so that this could be a compliant site, and this is what was found to be best for the for the. Company. Additionally, um. You can see in this drawing, C C two O five right now, there is um this. Large rectangle of additional parking that was not part of the previous approval. This again, there's a lot of elements of this that would have been an administrative site plan, because they're adding parking and and just. Doing a little bit of changing. This, I think, will be beneficial, because they actually are combining. Um they're taking a sliver of the property to the south, combining of this property and combining all the properties, so what the. Planning department and the applicant is asking of the planning commission today is to make a. Determination whether that tunnel is appropriate for uh this site.
Walkway, covered walkway.
It's a covered walkway.
Oh, it's a, so it's, is it open on either sides, or?
No, this is a totally enclosed.
It's not a tunnels, because I was thinking what you were thinking. Sorry, back to.
No, bridge would be over it. No, bridges over tunnels on.
Driveway to the south where they're adding all the parking.
Little here driveway, yeah, that, what is that? So, um Scott Gierling owns all of this property, and Train actually rents from Scott Gierling. He owns the piece of property to the south.
Oh, so he's gonna use this as as one of its curts to get in.
Correct, so they actually, when they did this development, they received a variance to have driveways within three. Hundred feet of each other, yeah, because with that speed, we don't allow multiple driveways, so we actually don't mind. That there's.
This was wondering, because that's what I was wondering, so the owner is all about combining these two lots. So he's gonna legally combine these two lots for a long term lease tenant of his. That wants to just put this. Above ground tunnel between the two buildings and add parking to the south, which is needed.
And and I will note too.
Every time you ask me, I'll call it something different.
We should probably have Jack come up and explain what it's really called, because I'm just using tunnel, because it seems like.
And it's not a tunnel, it's gotta be a, what a breezeway, right?
Building connector. It's fully enclosed, um concrete floor, you know, full architecture, um it's intended. Not necessarily just for pedestrian traffic, they're gonna have. HVAC equipment that's gonna be high load back and forth, their workflow is, comes in this. Stage of the building, gets worked on here, and then it goes to this, the south building to get finalized, prep for shipping, tested. So they they have some.
Big, it's gotta be a pretty big.
Yeah, yeah, it's a. Yeah, it's enough for two high lows to get past each other. Yeah, with guard guardrails on the side, so you're not, you know, hitting walls, all that kind of stuff.
What people can go to.
Uh not intended for people, because of high low, yeah, yeah, there's not a separate walkway, so it's really just. So, a lot of cooks in the kitchen, our client is Scott Gierling's. The landowner, the leaseback guy, Train, a lot of cooks in the kitchen there, original people we're working with, we're like, well, we're just gonna hilo that. Outside, but they're from south, and we have winter, and so, a bad idea, so then this started. Becoming reality that corporate said, no, we need inside space for all that stuff to happen. And the parking, if you recall, when we were here for the approval. Over a year ago, lots of discussion we had on parking, because every. Everybody was familiar with some of Train's other facilities, and there's. Cars parked on the street, they don't have an, so. The parking to the south helps solve that problem, corporate was very concerned that they were gonna duplicate some of their errors on other sites, so. All that parking that we're adding on the south, we'll take care of all that, we have an abundance of parking now.
The only thing, problem I have has nothing to do with what we're here, so. That ugly private defense section.
I thought your air conditioner went down and it was.
That that ugly. Which apparently was approved at some point as a way to hide air con, the units that are waiting.
Oh, we we had that wood fence around, that was the only option we had, we didn't, yeah, there was nothing else, they had to put, they had to stage them somewhere.
There is a landscaping plan where that entire front of that. Land, that fence will be thoroughly landscaped as well.
They were out there working today.
There were some members that didn't feel the need for that. Other members were like, no, that needs to be covered up.
Once that's covered, it'll.
Uh are you the, are you the, are you the standing applicant then?
The landowner.
Yes, that's correct.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, I do wanna note with front of the recommendations, the the site plan that's before you right now, only page C. Two O five shows the tunnel. Connecting the two buildings, and our current site plan that's been submitted, all of these pages need to be changed to the correct one, so. I know it's just kind of a procedural thing to say it, but we wanna make sure you're not approving every single page of this. You're you're approving a plan that modifies all the pages. To indicate the connection of the tunnel.
That's good clarification.
Does anybody have any? Issues or anything they wanna discuss about this, I mean, I I actually, now that it's for machinery and not for people, I'm probably a little more. Why wouldn't I be okay with it with people, but?
I know, I'm like, I'm okay with it, whatever, especially they're combining lots, it's not like they're. Connecting two buildings on two separate lots, I think that's the big thing for me, as long as the lots are combined. I don't see any issue with it, it's gonna be one parcel.
Yeah, me too, and not to be um like hypercritical, uh just a question really for staff in the. Recommendation, recommended motion that the first, it kinda says the use. Shall operate according to this application and per the testimony of applicant, I was just kinda wondering what that kinda second half was.
Yeah, because again, it's hard when you're going back later.
What he said he's gonna do. But you're right, I mean, it it's not necessary.
I just didn't know, it was like, am I missing something, like there's.
I did, to be honest, I was on this kick where we were gonna start doing that with every single motion, when they got approved in twenty twenty-four, and I cut and pasteed the motion from the previous.
I just wanna make sure, so that they use shop rate according to this application for. Use of. High lows, what did you say to?
I mean, what, it's really the request that's.
Does it matter, but does it matter what they really use it for?
I don't, that's. Wondering, I didn't know like if that was important to you.
You could turn it into a door track for your employees from like here.
Okay, this is a site plan review, it's not. Okay, this is a site plan review. It's not a special use that actually lays out all these little elements of the use. It's a site plan review.
So that we comply and building. So we can get rid of that the use shall operate according to this application.
You can.
Cause there's no, I just wanna make sure everybody's okay. There's no specific use for this connector that we wanna put restrictions on.
We're concerned about, right?
Alan.
What's that? I'm sorry. I was reading the notes.
Like, you're the one I'm worried about.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Number one in staff recommendation is that this, that the use shall operate according to this application and per the testimony of the applicant. I wanna get rid of that because the use, we're not approving a specific use for this walkway between the two buildings.
Right.
Realistically, they can do whatever they want within the confined use of that area. So I would like to take off the number one, that the use, whatever they use this above ground tunnel for. We don't really care. It, it's to connect the two buildings. They're either gonna walk between them or they're gonna use machinery between them. Or they're gonna use it for exercise for lunch time.
Yeah, I, I think it's unnecessary. I think four is really what the.
Yes, I agree. To co- combine the lots, because once those lots are combined, they can connect their buildings.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Alan?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I think that was fine, yeah. Um, yeah.
Alright, ready?
Ready. Why are you worried about me?
Cause I could tell you weren't paying attention.
There it is.
I wanted to make sure you were on board with the rest of us.
Paying attention now.
Eye contact.
No, I just don't want him to be like, wait, we did what? Your opinion matters. Alright, make a motion to approve case number twenty four thirty eight forty-two. The site plan approval for fifty-eight twenty-four Craft Avenue with the following conditions. The applicant modifies all site plan sheets to indicate the final location of the tunnel. Storm water maintenance agreement be, be modified in accordance with the changes to the plan. And the applicant finalizes the combination of the lots and records it with Kent County before the construction of the tunnel.
Support.
All those in favor? I, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two, two and O.
Yeah, well done.
Uh, alright, article ten, acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Uh, article eleven, other business. Um, is there any, there's nothing we can do with that fence, right? Okay.
I mean, I, yeah, I know. So I think the landscaping will help. I haven't been out there to see it.
It's hor- it looks horrible.
It's bad. What kind of material? Is it vinyl?
No, it's good.
It's just, it's wood, right?
Yes, well, so I was driving, I was riding up thirtieth right there, kinda by the um, by the cemetery. And about three or four houses up, somebody is building a six foot high wood fence in their front yard that comes right up.
That fence.
To the walkway. Uh, same side of this thirtieth, same side as the street is the um, the cemetery. And it's like.
Is that, was that approved though?
That, so this is a weird thing.
Is it the one that has two front yards?
It is, it's a corner lot, the two front yards.
Those approved to the planning commission, but it's.
Twenty twenty-two, but it's the land use has been, is expired.
Oh.
So we're in this weird spot where we've got notices about it. If the zoning ordinance gets adopted as it is, that would be considered a front side yard because of their address. And they would be allowed to build up to the property line.
With new ordinance.
With the new ordinance. So we're in this like. Spot where, how, how far do we push a compliance issue? We're gonna, we're kind of gonna let them know that they, their land use has expired in a letter. We're going to play out how the new ordinance goes. And if it gets adopted as is, then we will close their case, cause it will be compliant. If things are changed because of that, we will then, I mean, then they're in kind of a weird spot. They probably should apply under this ordinance.
So I have a question too, when you talk about it being right up to the pathway.
Now, again, I was.
No, but, but.
Whipping by on my bike, so I wasn't.
Is there a survey of some sort done to make sure that it wasn't?
I, I believe, I did not look at all of the plan.
Just past the, the uh.
Cemetery.
Cemetery.
East of the cemetery.
Like, and I'm like, uh, and I'm, I'm kinda, three or four houses past the cemetery.
Well, and there's just be a road, so there, cause there's a road. And I'm just going off memory from however long ago, she said, there's a road off thirtieth street that curves like this. Their house actually faces this other street.
There's some.
Their, their backyard is up against thirtieth street. And at the time, which was, she said four, five years ago, they had young children. That's their backyard.
Yeah.
Thirtieth street is very fast. It was approved at the planning commission, a variance for them to put the fence in this special use for that, for them to put the. Fence in the backyard, but it's been over a year.
Yeah, it just looks horrible. I drove by and I was like, I rode by and I was like, that looks horrible.
And there's.
And I, and I'm, you know, doing this, like.
I compared to what you went through.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't take a very close look. I just took more of a what the?
And just making sure that it's not.
Beautiful fence I've ever seen.
No. No.
So I can see, cause I, I turned my computer off. There we go.
So yes, with that fence, we're in, in a kind of a, a very awkward spot.
A bit of a pickle.
Yeah.
We're in a bit of a.
I mean, look at that, right up to the walkway.
The question is how much of a, how much, cause I'm assuming the um township.
Well, that tree is right there. That's why too, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we, we discussed that at the planning commission level, with the property. At the, at the property lines.
I don't remember what it is. I know it's thirtieth. And what's weird is that you can't, it's not very clear here, but this is a private drive. So this is where interpretation gets really hard because the property, the, is addressed off of whatever this private drive is. That I can't recall right now.
Yeah. And, and the thing is, even you're driving down thirtieth, it's like, boom, there's this big fence. And then there's nothing, and it's like, it just totally looks.
I get it. And, and I won't even bring the five million other ones that are everywhere in the township that didn't get approval at any point in time. Where at least this one.
Thirty-six.
Mm-hmm.
The other way isn't, there's twenty-eighth.
I wanna keep your computer away from you.
Am I driving you nuts?
Yeah.
Every time.
Here's thirty.
Sorry. Just give me the mouse.
So.
So this is a, a really, if, if I understand this to be right, it's seventy-two sixty-nine. However, when I look at those drawings, that, this Thorncrest doesn't. You guys will have to tell me, is that Thorncrest right there?
No, that, the next one up is Thorncrest. Go, go, no, 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 stay on there. And then move, no, that picture right there, go where the, the driveway was. Put your pointer, put your pointer with.
Yeah, this isn't Google Maps.
I know, but put your pointer where the driveway is. Now go a little bit further up, that's impressed.
Okay, so then we might be looking at the wrong property at which point this is not compliant.
But no, but this is the one that came to the planning, oh.
Where is that street then on this?
Yeah, cause their house, oh no, this isn't the right one. I think, cause the house that came to the planning commission actually faced an opposite street. I think it was that corner house.
Yes.
And that's not whose fence that is. It looks like the fence that that picture is of is the one next to it, right?
That's what I would say.
Yeah, and I haven't been out there.
Way on thirtieth street.
Now Thorncrest is not that, or Thorncrest is not that far up from that house.
Which one?
Well, the one that, that Alan was pointing out.
Well, that's this one right here.
We think it's that one.
We think, basically, cause you, it looks like there's a driveway right here. Does that house on the corner, go back to the Thorncrest, yeah, does that house have a second driveway on to thirtieth?
I do not see one.
What is that thing behind their garage?
This? I know, I don't know.
RV.
I was trying to look at the pictures. If that was in fact the same property, because it doesn't. I'm not convinced.
I, I, I don't know. Yeah, and I just, I saw it and I.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a little bit more recon on this one.
Run drive by on that.
Yeah, we'll do a little more recon on this one, cause it's definitely noticed. It was, but then we, you know, we're in this weird spot. Um, on that though, on the zoning ordinance, I do wanna let the planning commission know where we're at. The board took your recommendations um, and, and has considered those, but has not quite made decisions on the. Final direction of the zoning ordinance. So they've set up um another. Uh, notice, we've noticed a public hearing for, just for um October eight. For the board to hear um some comments. They, they're kinda getting struck on, stuck on private streets. Um, and residential density and al- allowing um residential in the village. Um, which has been a huge part of the master plan and the GTA's plan. Um, so it's been a little bit um shocking that that has been the, the issue that's come up. But we are still hoping that we can get. Yeah, so I, you know, if, if the planning commission has comments, you're welcome to attend those meetings or you're welcome to bring your insight. Um, we, we wanna get this kinda over the finish line because we're seeing a lot of applications come in and limbo. And we wanna make sure that the applications that come in are, you know, meet the goals and intent of the master plan. And that's why we, you know, uh, worked really hard on getting the zoning ordinance together. So I, I encourage you to, to come if you can. Um. In the meantime, I, we actually are a little bit chill on applications. So at this point, our next two app, two um, planning commission deadlines have closed. So we're able to cancel the October sixth and the October twentieth planning commission. But we do have items that will be heard on the first um November planning commission. So enjoy your October. Um, and.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, I can make plans for all month of October.
Yeah, you can. And now we have. The first, okay, November third, we next, I think that's all that I told everybody, did not let me forget, right? Anybody else?
I don't remember.
Okay, well, we got thirty-three minutes before the Lions game starts. So you guys are great. Thank you.
Is anybody in any skills? Are they good? Alright, motion adjourned. So I don't need to make a motion, I just.